All right. Call the meeting to order. Sarah, please call the roll.
Cottam, here. Felman?
Here.
Michael?
Present.
Callender?
Here.
Long? Bruckerhoff?
Here.
Bulby?
Here.
McSpadden?
Here.
Erwin?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and we'll have our prayer by the anointed Pastor Dave Newborn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that introduction, Herb. I hope I don't give up to it. Will you guys please join me in a word prayer tonight? Father, we're thankful that when it comes to a city council meeting in the scope of big things, as we call it, the world, this might be a small thing, but we have an agenda tonight. There are personal things that need to be settled. There's a lot of conversation. And this community is just as important as any other community on the face of the planet. So tonight, Father, while there's devastating news coming out of Texas, we have things happening rapidly over in the Middle East, we're so glad that you have paid attention to us and that you care about every aspect of what we do. So we pray your blessing on tonight, our conversations, the outcomes, the decisions that will be made. And we pray your blessing on Claremore. It's a community where we love. We do business here. This is where we live. And we ask that you would just watch over us as we become the citizens you can be proud of. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Appreciate you.
See you, Herb.
Sarah, do you have anybody set up to call the public?
Yes. Jessica Saxton?
I'm sorry. We'll have Adam go with... Okay, thank you.
I'm the city's attorney and I give an advisory at the beginning of meetings when we have folks signed up for a call of the public as you are. We allot three minutes for each individual to speak. Just a clarifying point, because this is a meeting called under the Open Meetings Act, anything you say, the council can listen, but it can't respond to. And so with that, you'll hear a timer go off at the end of three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. My name is Jessica Saxton. I'm a civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington, DC, and I'm here to provide notice to Claremore City Council today. This is in accordance with USC's rules of civil procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution for the United States of America is the overarching requirements that all states must follow. I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. States are not able to enact their own alternative legislation in substitution for the guarantees of the Constitution. That would mean that the state laws are in fact more powerful than the Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states that no person should be held to answer for a capital or otherwise indecent crime unless on presentment or indictment by a great jury. However, the state of Oklahoma unfortunately has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. That is unlawful. An emolument violation is when you pay public officials to commit a crime. There are two areas that the Constitution reinforces. One is Article 1, Section 10, that states that no state shall create a law that shall impair the obligations of contracts. So police officers, prosecutors, and judges are all under a contract, a contract to perform based on their oath or affirmation that they have sworn to uphold and defend the Constitution. When states enact their own laws and direct their agents to disobey that law, that is, which is the Constitution of the United States, that would be a direct violation of Article 1, Section 10. The Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you'll find this issue where it says that that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges and immunities of the United States citizens. Privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a minimum those that are enumerated in the Bill of Rights and the first ten amendments. They are unable to be impaired. The state of Oklahoma unfortunately has enacted its own inferior constitution that is permitting public officials whom you all pay to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there's an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of Oklahoma unlawfully and unconstitutionally. Tanaa Downing is litigating this at the United States Supreme Court on behalf of more than 700,000 people that are currently imprisoned here in America unconstitutionally. I am here to provide notice to you today that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, that criminal sanctions can come from that. We don't want to go down that path. I don't think anyone does. Nonetheless, we must make officials aware that you cannot continue to pay people, public officials, to disobey the law. That is an emolument violation. It is illegal. It is unconstitutional. And it's a crime. So I'm asking you honorable individuals today, if you'll please take a look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, confirm that what I'm saying is true.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need to provide this for the record.
If you leave it with the clerk, she'll... Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Sarah, anyone else?
There's one more. Tanaa Downing?
Yeah.
Same.
Okay, great.
Could you spell your first name, sir? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. It's a T as in Tom, A as in apple, N as in November, A as in apple, N as in November, A as in apple, H as in hotel. Tanaa Downing.
Thank you.
Yes. So my name's Tanaa Downing. I'm the civil rights advocate litigator that Ms. Saxton was just referring to. I want to provide just a little bit of clarification for you guys so that you guys can, you know, understand why we're here and what we're doing because I imagine it might be a little confusing at the moment. I have roughly 32,000 affidavits on behalf of affected victims here in the state of Oklahoma. Many are right here within Claremore. And so when a state creates a law that's contrary to the Constitution, that is unconstitutional. We have to recognize the fact that the Constitution of the United States is the overarching requirements that every state must follow. No state has the authority to create its own alternative legislation and substitute it for the guarantees of the Constitution, just as Ms. Saxton said. So when a state does do that, and then they direct their agents, the prosecuting attorneys, police officers, to obey that severe law, then a crime is committed. It's called deprivation of rights under color law. So these affidavits that I have, they're called prima facie evidence or a per se crime. These are per se crimes because we don't have to prove that these public officials intended to breach their obligation, simply by virtue of the breach of the constitutional obligation. All elements of crime have been met because their willfulness and knowledge derives from the promise they make. If you make a promise, a public official, you fail to fulfill a promise, we don't have to prove that you intended to do it because your willfulness and knowledge derives from that. So the prima facie evidence is more than sufficient to establish the per se crime. We're not trying to get anybody into trouble. Don't get us wrong here. We're not here because we want people to get into trouble. We're here because we want you guys to understand that this is happening, and it's happening prolifically across the state of Oklahoma. There are thousands of people right now currently imprisoned in Oklahoma on direct facial constitutional violations because the state didn't follow the very basic procedures and processes enumerated, codified in the Constitution for all to see. That is a facial constitutional violation. It makes those convictions void without force or effect. I'm not saying these are good people. I'm not saying these are lawful people. I'm saying these were rightful people, and we need to make sure that we give them the rights that they're guaranteed and were promised by their birthright and codified in the Constitution. Now, one last thing that I'd like to say here is that conspiracy with regard to public officials, what it says is that any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs conspired to be done and who have the power to prevent or even prevent the commission of the same neglects or refuses to do so, may be joint defendants in the action. So upon providing this notice to you guys, so that you know that this is happening, you have a statutory obligation now to take action to either, one, stop paying for these crimes to be committed, or two, you know, confirm what we're saying and direct those agents to act with constitutional intent. The one thing I want to say last here is that I know you're going to go to your city attorney next. You're going to ask him about this. And the city attorney needs to understand that he's going to direct you toward...
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. God bless.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other speakers?
None.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Bulby?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Any items unforeseen at the time of posting?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
Still moved.
Michael?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Call the order of the regular meeting of the Claremore Public Works Authority. Sarah, please note the rule. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Cottam?
I just wonder, all of these are the same, or did any of these go up at all?
Most of the memos that I saw were honored the same price as last year.
Okay.
The memos that were...
Because I didn't know if some of them allowed, you know, an increase at all.
Okay. And even if they don't stay the same, typically, we go with the lowest on these.
I just wanted to make sure. It was a dimming signal.
Good question. Any other discussion? Sarah?
Cottam?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
The memos were in the packet.
Any items unforeseen at the time of posting?
None.
Do I hear a motion to accept the consent items?
Still moved.
Any discussion? Sarah?
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Call the order of the regular meeting of the Claremore City Council. Sarah, please note the rule. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Still moved.
Michael?
Yes.
Bulby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Any items unforeseen at the time of posting?
None.
Mayor's report. Attended the Fourth of July celebration at Claremore Lake. Fantastic job by the Claremore Lakes Department or Parks Department. The fireworks show was great. The parks looked incredible. Police did a great job getting people in and out. So just another fantastic event by the city of Claremore. So well done. And that's all I have. Awards, presentation, communication.
We're going to, I think, bring Scott Vaughn up, Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
For his annual requirement to present to the council for our stormwater permit, if I'm correct.
All right. Thank you, guys, for giving me a few minutes here. I'll try and make this as brief as possible. So our stormwater program is a required program. Let me see. There we go. It allows us to discharge our stormwater to local streams. And if you understand what that means, that means we have no choice but to participate because our stormwater is going to discharge to the local streams. So it's definitely something we have to participate in. And we are classified as a municipal separate storm sewer system for a town between 10,000 and 100,000 volts. So we're a Phase 2 MS4. So obviously, this keeps us in compliance with federal and state requirements. And the program is structured using minimum control measures, and there are six of those. And we'll cover each one of these briefly. MCM 1 is public education and involvement. Because we don't treat our stormwater, which most cities don't, we have to stop pollution at its source. So that's what public education and involvement is aimed at. So we do this through a variety of means. We distribute brochures in the lobbies in a couple of our buildings, keep our website up to date with pertinent stormwater information. We do EnviroScape demonstrations at elementary schools. We touched base with about 292 students last year through this method. So that's always a lot of fun. We show how stormwater pollution works and how it ends up in our waterways. We send out mailers with our utility bills. We do staff training. We do cleanup events, like our hazardous waste event, House with Hazardous Waste Event in April or May each year. Set up a booth at Rogers County Fair. I interacted with, I don't know, I lost count, over 1,000 people, I'm sure. Truck retreats, parades, different events like that. So second MCM is industrial stormwater runoff control. It's for Category 3 MS4s. We are a Category 2. So this one doesn't apply to us, but it's something they may put in the permit when they update the permit next year. So it's something where they have to be involved in in coming years. MCM 3 is illicit discharge and detection, just basically identifying anything that's not rainwater in the stormwater system. So a few things we do along that, in that regard, is we distribute pet waste bags in facilities. We did 14,000 last year. Tyler reporting sewer overflows 24 hours, abatement of any illicit discharges we do find, voluntary stream monitoring through Blue Thumb, and mark all our storm drains with some sort of message that says, you know, drains to river, or something along those lines. We keep an update on our map of priority areas. Those are various pollutants of concern and the major areas of town that could be admitting those pollutants. That's a review of ordinances that we do annually to prevent illicit discharges, inspections of incoming stormwater complaints. We had about 30 of those last year. I think we've had at least 30 this year already with all the rain. We promote recycling at the Met Recycling Center, and we do dry weather field screening on all 34 of our outfalls that we discharge, 34 places we discharge to the creeks, both cat and dog creeks. Improvements to sanitary sewer system. We replaced about 950 feet of sewer lines last year. Let's see. Right. MCM 4 is construction site runoff control. We perform regular inspections of construction sites. We review the ordinances annually as well. Review stormwater plans during the planning process to make sure that our larger developments have everything in order. We maintain a system for complaints, which is mostly by phone call and email. We issue settlement erosion control permits. That number is incorrect. I think that was the first quarter of this year. Following that for the year. MCM 5 is post-construction management. So we do post-construction inspections to kind of make sure the site's stabilized, we're not getting a lot of dirt runoff from the streets, review and update the ordinances as needed, and sponsor regional seminars like this one we held this year in conjunction with a few other cities to educate construction folks and municipal folks on keeping stormwater clean. Last MCM is pollution prevention and good housekeeping for MS4 operators. So that involves staff training for pollution prevention. We educated about 71 folks internally last year. Quarterly inspections for all of our city facilities. Those inspections were looked over by DEQ just a couple of months ago, and they were impressed with how we were doing on that. We had a few violations there, but we'll get into those. We're already addressing those. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping for MS4 operators. We also clean catch basins. We did 363 of those last year. We picked up 4,100 bags of litter and trash debris through the Parks Department. We do regular pond maintenance. We inspect and maintain those monthly. And there's an optional MCM 7, which is municipal construction activities. We have the Lowery Detention Pond here. It's an example of things that we manage through our existing permit rather than getting a specific construction permit for each of those projects. So that cuts down a little bit of the work that's involved in managing those. So that involves writing a stormwater pollution prevention plan and doing inspections. DEQ gave us some good feedback on our annual reports. Said it was the best-written Category 2 MS4 in the state. So they want to use it as an example for other cities in the state. So I thought that was good to hear. Good stuff. So job well done. It takes a lot more than me to get all this stuff done. So there it is. Any questions?
I'm just curious. I know you go to the schools. Do you see every, like, elementary age child?
Yes. I started with fifth-grade students, and then Will Rogers Junior High really wanted me to come out at the beginning of this year. So I'll let sell sixth-grade students. So I'm going to have to develop a second presentation because all the kids I saw this year, they want me back again for sixth grade. So I'll have to go with something separate then, yeah.
Do you tell them, like, do you educate them on what they can do as children?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious.
They all raised their right hand and pledged to me that they will never throw trash out their car window after again.
Scott, thank you very much for informing us of these.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I may. Scott does a great job working with the engineering team, and he does a really good job. So part of that internal training is all of our public works, folks that have especially sanitation streets, water, sewer. They sit through this training, which is just fantastic. He just really does a great job. And you'll remember, his predecessor did a really good job. He's continuing and building and growing those programs. We're probably going to start having some conversations moving forward about a FOG program, which is fats, oils, and grease. We haven't really stayed on top of that through our, the amount of commercial restaurants. So there's always pushback on those things, but when you go in and really start looking at some of those and go, no, you can't just let that dunk down into the sewer system because that's what clogs up your sanitary sewer collection lines, and you get buildups and backups and breaks and torque claims and all that. So we've been talking about it for a couple of years. So a FOG program is in our future. That would be presented to this council, which will require an ordinance. But we're growing to the point with certainly the fast food and quick service restaurant industry that while most places have something in place, they don't necessarily do the annual inspections. And a lot of that stuff is getting by us, getting into our sewer system, our sanitary sewer system. But anyway, Scott, thank you. Great presentation, and he does a great job for us.
Yeah, thank you. Staff reports.
Thank you. Couple of things real quick. The city engineer, Todd Rube, Power and Light Director, Stan Brown, and myself sat down with CEC. That's the firm that we hired to do our master plan or master plan and evaluation for our citywide electric system. As you recall, that was one of my highest priorities. And then we ran into the issue a couple summers ago. We're having issues with subs too. So that became the number-one priority, and then we had to do some recircuiting and some other things. So Task Order 3, which was that master plan evaluation, is complete. They presented us. I look to be bringing them at the next meeting to present the findings and what we need to be doing moving forward for implementation. Again, what I've been saying for the last few years is these are not a question of if we've got to do these projects. It's a matter of how fast, and that will be reiterated once they go through this. The good news is, is that it's not as bad as I was anticipating. So there are a lot of things that we can be doing and that we can get done. But I imagine, once we put that together and work with Garrett on some other priorities, we will then sit down and go out and talk to bond council about kind of another big capital improvements list that will include power, sanitary sewer. I'm also going through the updated stormwater and sanitary, or the sanitary sewer master plan, which in 2025, that will be presented to you all in the near future too, from the consultant. In 2025, the recommended needs right now, immediate needs, are about $80 million on just sanitary sewer. So there's a lot of things that we knew we would come into. So now it's time to start putting our money where my... and figuring out what are those priorities. So you'll be seeing that presentation too. ODOT has got signs up digitally that they are going to be starting the mill and overlay project on 66 and Will Rogers Boulevard, State Highway 66, State Highway 88, beginning next week on July 14. So that, the initial phase of that will then come into a few really bad areas where you can't just put asphalt on top of it because there's failure. So they're going to be doing some base repair in some areas. And so that will be first, as you noticed, our crews are staying out in front of them to get the inlets done so we don't cause puddles and additional degradation. So they'll be here next week to start that with overlay work, mill and overlay work scheduled to probably start in August. That's a 90-day contract. I believe BECA was awarded that, and they're going to do the majority of that work at night. So to hopefully kind of curtail some of the, and if you'll recall, that's a commitment. We've partnered with the county. We've got about a 20% match on that $5.1 million project. The city and the county combined will spend $1 million. Many of you saw today, I hope, either got a notification via the app or saw Facebook. We had an emergency repair that we're working on on Blue Star. Thank God, school's not in session, but Blue Star at Faulkner is closed in both directions. We had, again, as I always say, a significant failure in a drainage structure, which is what caused the roadway to give. So we're chasing that problem. It was something we identified and we're monitoring weekly. We already actually ordered the equipment that we needed and the new drainage pipe. We were going to start that project in a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, as much as it's rained over the last several months, it still was maintaining. We looked at it Friday, and it was fine. And what little rain we got overnight apparently was the straw that broke the camel's back. So they started chasing that repair. They were trying to do a temporary to get halfway across the road today and get it back opened up. We're going to chase that old concrete pipe all the way. So they're going to end up taking the whole thing out. Garrett's got an engineered plan already, so we're at least through tomorrow and possibly into Wednesday. So if you're listening at home... So if you're listening at home, check the Facebook page and the app, the Claremore app. You can download it on Android or iOS. It will send out notifications, but Blue Star, which is not, is closed at Faulkner. So avoid the area and find alternate routes if you can. And that is all I have. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. City Manager? I want to just comment, the engineering department does a fantastic job looking at potential problems and being prepared. And I know we weren't quite ahead of this one, but already have the parts ordered and everything we need. That puts us that much farther down the road. So Garrett does a fantastic job.
And thank you for your words. The Parks Department, the fireworks, they did a great job with that. So I'll relay that to them as well.
And the countless volunteers, there were a ton of them.
Oh my gosh, yeah, yeah.
Item number two, do I hear motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
I just have some questions on H.
Let's, the motion is second and then discussion because that way she can track the minute. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we get it all audibly.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
What was the increase for H4?
It's been several years and there's a need with personnel and outreach. Yeah, so the contract with Claremore Economic Development has been in place for many, many years since the 40s. And so it was a, it was a request that I actually made in the budget and you all approved.
So are you adding an employee or just adding to?
No, it's the amount of work they're doing and what they're doing for us, yes. Now, they, they have increased employment over the years, but they're still at the same level they have been.
Okay. And then on I, is that an increase or is that just?
That is an increase specifically because of the nature in which we're utilizing one of the senior level partners, our older agreement, which has been in place since Mr. Drummond was here and unfortunately he passed away. But since Adam's involvement in there, there's been some transitions and shifts in the fee schedule. So that's an annual agreement, but there was an increase for use of, they base their fees based on experience, years of service. And we are utilizing one of their most tenured attorneys now more for a specific project. However, in the past, it's been a much reduced rate. The good news is we're getting Adam at a bargain now. Go ahead, Parker. But we also anticipate ours used to go down. So we used to be on a monthly retainer and rarely did we ever hit that mark on the retainer. So there was just a redevelopment of the fee structure.
Good question.
So it could be more, it could be less depending how much we need lawyers. It's always depended on that.
Back to, back to H and I understand it was in the budget. So the reason it's on the agenda is this, but this was revising the addendum, but it was already in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. And it's a contract, so it's every year it's on a consent agenda. Yeah, so because it's an annual contract.
Okay, it has to be in the budget.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And the questions for discussion. Sarah?
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion of possible action on annual contract with Claremore Main Street for fiscal year 25-26, amount of $35,000.
So typically this too would be a consent agenda item, but we thought that the executive director was going to be here to give you all a brief update. That's the only reason we made it on agenda items. So we've had an annual contract at that level with Claremore Main Street for many, many years. That contract is specific to providing four events plus monitoring and helping data collection on building ownership, tenant occupancy, open spaces. They work a lot with Claremore Economic Development. And so there's not an increase and typically that would be on a consent agenda item. And their annual gala is this Thursday. If anybody wants to attend, please let Sarah know. I don't know if we have a full table.
That's not Claremore Main Street though.
Well, oh, Mo, I'm sorry. He's doing both, so I got confused. But yeah, so typically that would be a consent agenda.
What four events do they do? Just education?
So they do, so they do the food truck Thursdays. They do Dickens on the Boulevard. They used to do St. Patty's Day, but that's now being replaced with the Lilac Festival. And they do Taste of Claremore. Sorry, I had to get that. Taste of Claremore is the other event that they do. Which I will say this, last year, the Dickens on the Boulevard event, when you talk to the vendors and the Main Street people downtown, they said it was the biggest and busiest one they've ever had. Every single building and business that was open was shoulder to shoulder, which is great. And that's what that economic development spurs. They're doing some things right now. If you'll notice, there's some increased flower pots and some churchin' up and some cleaning up of downtown. And so they're doing, they're working with us and we're going to paint those horrific green light poles black. The four that were already done look so much better, so anyway, it just, yeah. So they're doing a lot and you know, there's high expectations and they know that, so. But yeah, I said, apologize, I, we anticipated their executive director must have had a miscommunication.
I was going to say, they look really good, the ones that are green.
Yeah, yeah, they look really good. And so all the ones that are busted up, so you all know, on that Main Street, we've ordered the parts and we're just waiting on that. And then eventually everything that's green will be painted black.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to say, any further discussion? Sarah?
Erwin?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 2025-10, amended section 98.07. Mr. Knutti?
Thank Council. Good evening. So basically what we're doing is we're updating this part of the ordinance that we have. In the past, it was designated as the mayor was the responsible party for hearing these cases of fellow nuisances. What we did was we just updated it to mirror what is said in our abatement for dilapidated properties, which is there's a hearing before the city manager. And then once the city manager makes a decision, the applicant can appeal to the city council for final determination of the outcome of the case. And so that's all we're doing. And we also added code enforcement officials as being responsible also for reporting these cases or billing these cases. Previous ordinances didn't have code enforcement and they just had fire chief, police chief, billing official, and I think one other person. I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but it's just an updated to mirror what we are to do with the abatements of dilapidated properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any question or discussion? Sarah?
Michael?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action on ordinance number 2025-10, amended section 98.07. Mr. Knutti?
Thank Council. Good evening. So basically what we're doing is we're updating this part of the ordinance that we have. In the past, it was designated as the mayor was the responsible party for hearing these cases of fellow nuisances. What we did was we just updated it to mirror what is said in our abatement for dilapidated properties, which is there's a hearing before the city manager. And then once the city manager makes a decision, the applicant can appeal to the city council for final determination of the outcome of the case. And so that's all we're doing. And we also added code enforcement officials as being responsible also for reporting these cases or billing these cases. Previous ordinances didn't have code enforcement and they just had fire chief, police chief, billing official, and I think one other person. I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but it's just an updated to mirror what we are to do with the abatements of dilapidated properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? Sarah?
Michael?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to approve or reject resolution number 2025-8. Mr. Knutti?
So this is the grant that just refuses to go away. I think this is the third closeout resolution we've done, but it's the nature of the timing of the documents that we've been sending and what the feds have been requiring from Oklahoma Department of Commerce, they haven't been able to match up yet. And so we think that this is going to end it and finally stop the madness associated with this grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? Sarah?
Michael?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Okay.
Michael?
Yes.
Rockerhoff?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mick Spadden?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion of vote to approve and to enter into executive session to discuss items regarding the city manager. Motion to enter.
Second.
Okay. 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 Okay.
The City Council adjourned into executive session to discuss Agenda Item Number Six having to do with the evaluation and the employment performance of the City Manager. While in executive session, City Manager John Ferry was called in briefly for discussion with the City Council while in executive session no other matters were discussed and no votes were taken.
Item Number Nine, Discussion Vote Regarding Employment Performance Evaluation: Continued Employment and Conversation of the City Manager.
John has one of the second longest standing council member here other than Brian here. We appreciate you, we appreciate not only what you're doing for the city currently but the level of respect and on a scene integrity you brought back to the city and the city manager's position specifically. With that being said, I make a motion that we increase your severance package from the six months it is to the semi-standard whatever for the state of Oklahoma for all city managers to twelve months severance. And I'm also asking you to direct your finance committee because we have asked for an increase of $10,000 to your salary so you'll need to do a budget adjustment. You're going to have to find that money somewhere.
Do I hear a second? Any further discussion? Comments?
We really appreciate all the hard work that it's been over the last year.
You've done a great job.
I would just like to say thank you.
We know you didn't ask for that.
I don't like doing budget amendments as you all know. I am very thankful to this body, I'm very thankful to this community. The last year has certainly shown us what we're made of and what we can overcome. And I'm touched by your words and the sentiment of the council and very much appreciative. And we are here for the long haul and we are making great strides. We just ask you and our citizens to be patient. We can't undo 130 years of decisions in the last five but we're trying. And we've got a bright future in front of us so I'm very grateful to this body and to this community so thank you for that very much.
Sarah?
Michael?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Raymondso?
Yes.
Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Raymondso?
Yes. Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cottam?
Yes.
Felman?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Bowlby?
Raymondso?
Yes. Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Ballby?
Raymondso?
Yes. Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Ballby?
Raymondso?
Yes. Mike Spadden?
Yes.
Proctor Ha?
Yes.
Ballby?
Raymondso?
Yes.